We're going to begin tonight's meeting at 7:30. Start with a flash of the flag. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, can you see if that sign? Sandy was pointing out that this is crooked.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think that was in a larger, larger scheme of things, which was that how the pictures she looked at it really was crooked.
Could I have votes in approving the village board in any meeting minutes from January 19th, 2023, and January 26th, 2023?
Votes.
Any discussion? Comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Moving on to public comment. Our resident public is here. Please introduce yourself and tell us where your residence is.
My name's Sally, and I live on Mechanic Street in the Village.
Haven't moved.
Haven't moved. Not moved. I went to the planning board meeting and saw from a distance the proposed plan for the thing that they were applying for the New York grant, New York State grant.
Former Jardine property.
Right. And what, from what I could see, it's kind of far away, it sounded like it was just apartments. And I'm like, um, I thought we weren't going to do just apartments. I thought it was going to be make of mixed use. But it was like over 200 apartments?
Well, it was, right. It was apartments in the middle, and then on the state road frontages, it was going to be commercial parcels. So four, four out parcels for commercial.
But mostly apartments?
Right.
Okay. Which is a lot of apartments and a lot of traffic. I just thought you'd mention that. What we really could use in the village is a grocery store? Just saying.
Are you sure who wants to come into the village?
Well, we have so many more, I mean, the Big M closed, but look at all the housing units that have been built since the Big M left. I'm just saying. I know a lot of people don't have reliable transportation and they're, we're living in, the village is kind of a food desert.
But it's a.
Tell them they have to build in the village. I mean, you can't go to weapons and say, you must build a store in Baldensville.
No, but I'm just saying we could be encouraging.
We, we have.
Okay. I don't know, because I'm just, I just see many years of no grocery store in the area. I mean, you got to cross the bridge, got to go down Downer or Tappan. So just, and I see a lot of people shopping at Vern Dairy.
The village has not told grocers they can't come here.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, I don't know what we could do to try to encourage a grocery store to come in.
The biggest encouragement would be if they were to come in to be profitable. So I'm sure that there's grocery stores that have done research on the village of Baldensville, and if it was prudent financially for them to do so, they'd probably build one right next back in the middle of the village.
Okay.
But with the, an understanding you're not within walking distance of a grocery store. But you're five miles from seven, eight grocery stores? So that's like, they don't, they won't build another Costco on 31. Well, because they've got the one Costco there that covers the whole area, and if it was profitable, they'd come.
Okay, so it's just the growth. So if I do a campaign and get a Trader Joe's interested?
Yeah, we would love it.
Okay. No more.
Good luck, right? I'll be there once a week, I'll do Trader Joe's.
I do know that Aldi.
I'll sign your petition.
When Aldi was looking for their site, they did look at different sites, even the shopping center where the Big M was, and it's just not, the traffic's not there. You know, the, that's so close to the highway and the traffic's there, so that's, you know.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking, it's like, right now, I either have to go to the other side of Baldensville, through the heart of all the traffic, where I have to drive extra miles to go on 690 to get to Tops, where I have to drive to Clay. And it's like, it just seems like, don't we get sales tax if there's a store? No? There's no financial benefit to the village?
No more.
Okay.
Those are old, olden days.
Just so you know, Sally, we all drive the same place you do.
Okay. No, I'm just.
We'd love to have another store nearby, but first of all, do you realize how much property they need to have, like awnings?
Yeah.
There isn't very many big properties like that within the village.
Because they're all filled with apartments. Sorry.
No, I mean, we did have the grocery store, the Sunshine over at the.
Yes.
And that one, they couldn't be successful on this side of the village, so.
It just seems like we're building all the housing, and so there's all this extra traffic driving.
There may be a point in time where population would make it profitable for somebody to come in.
Okay.
But we're not actively telling people no.
Okay. No, I didn't think you were telling people no, I just didn't know what the process was.
We would love it, but with private money.
I'm just a public.
With private, with private people investing their own money, private money, we can't tell them how to spend it. We can tell them what they're, what they can build.
Right.
But we can't tell them how to spend the money, and they're not going to spend their money if it's not a profitable venture.
So basically, they just need to know there's a need for a grocery store in Baldensville.
And I have people that are above my pay grade that do all those analyses and decide where they want to plant those.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a discussion with the seniors over at Conifer one day. They were upset that there was so many new apartments going in in the old Tri-County Mall. And I said, I have a question for you. Have you shopped at the new Aldies? Oh, yeah. I said, you know why that Aldies is there? Because those apartments were in the Tri-County Mall. They had an audience half a mile away, and it made their numbers work as far as exposure, and so they built an Aldies right where they built it. Otherwise, if those apartments aren't there, we don't have Aldies. I mean, that's just the way things work. More apartments, you got a better chance for a grocery store.
Okay. Well, we have a lot of apartments now, so I thought, you know, maybe we could leverage that for a grocery store somewhere. Thank you.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Any other public that would like to make comments?
Maybe I will.
Okay.
I think I saw it on the news last, or I was looking on my phone, and you have some people retiring.
Could you tell us your name and.
Sidney Clark, 271 Genesee Street.
Thank you.
We have some people retiring, don't you?
Yeah.
And, and I don't have the agenda here in front of me, but I want to, I think, Greg is leaving, right?
Yes. We haven't reached up to that yet.
Oh, okay. All right, well, then I spoke out of turn, but maybe he is. And then.
Mike Maslow?
Mike is leaving, right? The, the planning board, Louise. Did I get them all?
Yep.
As far as we know, Louise isn't on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, okay, that's it. Well, anyways, what I wanted to do is to thank all of you for everything that you brought into the village, and, because, you know, it's like, I know, I've known these people for a long time, and I just want to wish everybody well. That's all. And I hope the people that come in to replace them are as helpful and professional as the ones that are leaving. That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you all.
Well said. Okay, moving on to trustee's comments. Since we've covered both of the public. We'll start tonight with Eric, please.
I'd like to echo Cindy's thank you to Greg and Mike as well. It's been a pleasure serving with you, Greg. I'd be sad to see you go, and expressed it to you earlier today, but I'll express it in public now. I also wanted to address the tragedy of Ava Wood. And I'd like to thank Chief Levancheck for the response. I know that was not easy for you to go into that, that scene, such a tragedy for our community. And trying not to get too emotional about this, but, you know, talking to my daughters who are in school, one of them goes to school with Ava, it, you know, it just strikes me the, how much something like that can affect a community. And you don't realize how much you touch people, and if something like this happens, and Ava really touched this entire community. And moving forward, I'd just like us all, you know, share a love and compassion toward each other, just to keep that memory alive of Ava. That's about all I can say on it. Thank you.
And also, just the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, just the agenda for me. Thank you.
I'm going to stick to the agenda. I'll throw a congratulations out to Greg, not because he's leaving, but because it, hopefully, he's moving up in the world. And then I'll stick to the agenda, including when we get to him.
I'll stay with the agenda, too.
Yeah, just echoing what Eric said, and I liked and I appreciated what the polar plunge, the, you know, the dedication to Ava Wood, you know, it was multiple groups that were dedicating their, their time and, and their bodies to get frozen in the, you know, in the water to Ava Wood's memory. And, you know, outside of that, I'll stick to the agenda. Good luck, Greg.
Mr. Mayor.
I have a few things, just so everybody knows, I'll send you NITCOM's summary of what the governor's proposing budget-wise. NITCOM has led us into asking for increases in the CHIRPS money, increases in aid assistance to villages, several different things. I'll, I'll send you a copy of the letter that I sent to Bill Maguirelli, John Lamond, John Mannion, and Will Bartley, asking them to support villages. That we have a 2% tax gap and an 8% inflation rate, and in a lot of the things we deal with, I'm sure that Chuck deals with buying stuff, paying people to come in, help with projects in the village, that the increases in what we're paying is probably more than 8%. So, you know, you expect us to hold tight on 2%, and the rest of the world, you know, the school budgets are way much higher than 2% because it's figured differently. So I sent my letters and asked them for some support. On the 9th, next week, have a Zoom meeting with the people that are proposing the kayak lending service. It's a big caged box type thing, and you, I'm not sure how it works, I will find that out, but you can go in and rent a kayak and, to use it in the river. They would like to put one of those somewhere in the village, either at Mercer Park or Community Park, and we'll find out what they have to say. It's not supposed to cost us anything, they don't need us to build a cement pad. So we'll just see what they have to talk about. It was very nice last week to send off Ramon. I think she was really touched. We wish her well, and we know we're in good hands with Jody and Melissa, so that's good. I did send an email to Joel Marici to tell him that we were very interested to know if we had any plans to continue work on Lock Street. That we anticipated by this time, maybe the project would be done, and we feel disappointed that nothing's happened. So where do you stand? I know there was a great turnip mail at the school board to speak about superintendent issues. I would just encourage people in the village who have feelings about the subject to speak up. Let the school board know one way or the other how you feel. And I was very proud of our village for responding, our community for responding. And sometime, take a good look at the taxes that the school dishes out. They have a different formula, so we end up paying a 5% or 6% increase, but because of the way their budgets are set up, it only registers as a 2% under the formula. But they still raise our taxes to more, I mean, our, our tax rate's down 60 cents. I believe that Lysander's is down, and Van Buren's is holding steady. Be nice if the school could kind of hold steady, too. But that's another thing to speak up about. And I would like to request an executive session on personnel issues, would be item E. And that's all.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that you add Rachel May to your mailing list?
Okay.
As a.
Yeah. I will. Thank you. Anybody's got anybody else, the state government that you'd like me to send it to? It's all in Word, it's Word documents, so I can just pop it on an email and send it. That's it. I'm done.
All right. Move to our attorney tonight.
Good. Joe. Good seeing you all again. I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. And let you clerk, Joey is now official, right?
Yes.
Not according to her name tag, though.
It's in process. Just wanted to let everybody know that all the information regarding the 23, 24 village taxes has been sent to Anadota County for processing. Residents should be receiving their village tax on or about March 1st. They are due by April 1st without penalty. And also absentee ballot applications are now available at Village Hall. That's all.
Thank you. Treasure, Mark?
Just, just one thing, I don't know if I got discussed during the work session, but let me see here, Mike. I don't know if it was discussed during the work session, but we did get a pilot from Osida for Baldensville Senior Housing Preservation Conifer Village. Goes into effect next year for us. So they originally had sent us saying it goes into effect this year, and a handful of us were panicking a little about how we're going to do that. And, because we've already cast the budget, set the levy, all those kind of things, and that would have changed all of that. But that's, that was an error on their part, and they're redoing this, and we'll get it, I don't know when, in the next month or two. But it is for the 2024 tax year for us, 24, 25, basically. So, so they're on the tax levy for this year. And I would, I guess I would just echo the mayor's comments about the finances of the village, and I would just say, we always have to be looking for other revenue streams. And that includes lobbying with, with the government above us for support in those revenue streams, but it also includes everything we do here. And I'm not advocating to, you know, nickel and dime our residents, but there's revenue streams that island that's out there, things like that. I'll, I'll single out the chief of police and what a good job he's done with the school system, and great revenue stream there coming in for, for those school resource officers to the village. So it's all good.
Moving on to the senior center.
Just a couple of things. We have a couple of events coming up for Valentine's Day. One will be on Monday, February 13th, the 10 o'clock social gathering, music at 11:00, and then stay for the senior lunch at noon. And on Valentine's Day, the 14th, we do have an ice cream social plan for 3:00 PM. So come on in and, and take part in those. Also, the Baldensville Teachers Association is again giving us tickets to the musical, which is going to be a matinee for us on March 12th, if you want to attend that. We have free tickets. And also, transportation, if you're interested, but you do have to call and make a reservation for that. And just one thing, which is a little bit premature, maybe, just so people can put it on their calendar if they're interested, as the mayor mentioned, some discussions about the school. The senior center will be hosting a presentation from the district on their upcoming budget and capital projects, and that's in the, during the day, so April 12th, 9:00 AM. If you're interested, put that on your calendar and plan to come out for that. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Public Works.
Everybody's production in winter mode here now. These are usually challenging times for the water departments, so when it gets this cold, everybody's ready, the crew's already, if we have any breaks. Something we run into a lot, homeowners, that people don't go down to your basements very often, when it gets this cold, you go down and you feel a little tiny breeze coming by a window, it freezes the water pipes up. We run into that a lot, you know? If you have just a few minutes to get down and check your basement at this time of year, is when, we get, we get a few calls every year when it gets this cold that there is no water, and usually it's just a frozen pipe, and you can get just a little crack by a window or something, and that'll freeze your water pipe up. On the highway side, it's, as everyone knows, we're, you know, we're supposed to get probably a little bit of snow tonight. We have a new product, fur, that we put into some of our salt. When it gets below 17 degrees, the salt doesn't work really well, and it's blue. So traditionally, it's always been green, the state used some of it. We have some this year, so don't be alarmed if they're up tonight, or tomorrow, and it's this cold, and you see blue on your, on the road. It just holds it on the road a little better, works a little, little better, but it's only used when it's below zero. Clear net, is there questions? What's up?
Hey, just interjecting one thing as far as the cold. A lot of schools in Cleveland, Baldensville, have already announced they're going to close tomorrow because of projected cold weather. And again, this is one of those times, remember, if there's a senior citizen that lives alone near you, that, you know, that the house might get cold, maybe to, maybe just somebody to check in on it, make sure they're okay. And take care of your pets. Don't be involved in the cold. Thank you.
Code enforcement officer.
I would like to thank everyone for their support over the past almost 12 years. Working with everyone has been, you know, wonderful, and I think we've made a lot of headway in the village. A lot of old buildings are no longer here, a lot of buildings have kind of cleaned up, and that's, you know, some part, you know, due to the code enforcement office, in some part to the partnership of, you know, county programs as well. But, you know, we administer those in this department. The improvements I've seen, I'm thrilled with, you know, the way I'm leaving the village at this time, so, you know, I'll still be around if there's any questions about laboring items, open permits that are still there. So, you know, Chuck knows that, you know, if he can get ahold of me, and, and we can move through that process of transition. But thank you.
You mentioned the cleanup of the old buildings in Baldensville, which, as I've noticed over the years, we've taken care of a lot of those. And then I also notice, outside of the village, that they don't have the same philosophy. It's amazing to me that structures that are virtually falling down, nothing, nothing seems to happen with them. That's my comment. Now move on to our police chief.
Can I ask a real quick question? I don't know if it's time for it or not, but are we advertising for a new code enforcement rate or not?
Actually, yes, Jody's put in to see who's on the civil service list, and that's part of what we have to talk about later on, and we just have to set parameters, and then Greg's looked into, what's the other program?
The New York State Building Officials Conference, they usually take whatever the advertisement is, and, and they blast it to the statewide leadership. So there may be members that are, you know, they might be a deputy somewhere, or part-time somewhere that you're looking for full-time, so that's how some are hired laterally.
You're up, Mike.
Well, first of all, I'm not going to be at the meeting in two weeks, so I will comment regarding Greg, and he's been a great resource. We've worked cooperatively between his office and the police department, and it's been a great, great partnership, and I wish him nothing but the best. And to speak to trustee Studdens' comments, last week, a friend of mine who's retired from the sheriff's office, retired for about 13 years, and he was a lieutenant there. Prior to that, he, he worked on the administration side of the house, so he was inside for a while, for a few years. But he used to work, we used to be the 4524 car out here, so he worked, ate at night till 4:00 in the morning back in the day. And he hadn't been in the village in probably 15, 18 years, you know, and he said he came in, stopped in to see me, he was in town, he lives in Georgia now. And he said he almost didn't recognize the village because of all the improvements and that had been made within the village since he had last driven through and had been on patrol out here. This is someone that was, you know, in the village on a regular basis, working in patrol, you know, upwards of maybe 15, 16, 17 years ago. So he said, my goodness, you know, the change in all the topography that had changed in the view of the businesses and the facades. So that speaks to your comments, Bruce, and certainly the work that Greg has done. I will piggyback a little bit off of trustee Ryanald's comments. Obviously, two weeks ago, tomorrow, what happened in the village was really an unspeakable tragedy here in Baldensville. I'd just like to publicly say how proud I am of the response from our officers that were involved, whether it was the individuals that responded to the scene, that searched and found those individuals in that home, our school resource officers, obviously, the school community has been impacted dramatically by, by this, this incident. We had officers working at the vigil, at St. Mary's, following Sunday, and then last Friday and Saturday, it were life for the calling hours at the funeral. And just want to speak as to how proud I am of their performance, their professionalism, their compassion, their empathy, and really, at a time when many of them were personally feeling impacted by this, so many people in, in our community were in harm. And there's the assistance of Sheriff Toby Shelley and his cadre of deputies. We worked very closely together, as I said during our press conference, the sheriff and I walked that scene together. We've both been involved in law enforcement for some time, and it was an impactful moment for both of us. Worked very well with, with acting superintendent at the time, Joe DeBarbury, and we actually moved up the time of the press conference a couple hours, so we could allow the school staff the opportunity to have, to counsel and provide some, some care and compassion and comfort to the students and staff in the school community that, that really needed that. Because if we had done a press conference at 2:00 on a Friday, in school, it's out at 2:20, that would not have been, in my opinion, the right thing to do for all the students and staff to go home and deal with that on their own without the school, getting their counseling and support staff and crisis team in place. So I think it was really a testament to the relationships that have been established and working relationships that we have with, with all those entities that I mentioned. There's so many more, and I'll apologize if I'm leaving someone out, it's, it's my mistake and it's inadvertent. But that's, that's really all I have to say on that.
Lester's questions. Thank you. Thank you. Move on to pending business, which we don't have any. That's kind of nice. But a new business. Item A, a motion to approve levying the real property tax for the year 2023 to 2024 with a tax rate for the Lysander and Van Buren portions of the village to be $6.53 per thousand, and also levying of the water and sewer arrears in the amount of $126,110.14. The exemptions left unpaid from prior sales in the amount of $1,601.79, and the unpaid code fees in the amount of $1,375, and the sidewalk replacement project in the amount of $11,684.30. Move. Second. Discussion?
Is that sewer arrears number typical? I don't remember seeing one that big before.
Oh, yeah.
It is?
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably only a thousand dollars off from last year.
Wow.
I think sometimes maybe we've, we've had it split off. So you've seen water and sewer.
Oh, water and sewer, yeah.
So it would have looked smaller.
Would have looked half as much.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So this moves on to the county, correct? For them to.
Yeah, they have everything, yeah.
Item B, motion supporting participation in the Central New York Stonewater Coalition's Staff Services and Education Compliance Assistance Program from January 1st to December 31st of 2023, and agree to fund its portion of the program cost in the amount of $3,600. I'll make the motion.
One second.
Discussion? Is everybody familiar with this program? If so, then I won't say anything. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Carried. Item C, motion to accept the resignation with regrets of codes officer Greg Humphrey, effective Friday, February 24th, 2023. I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I'd like to make a quick comment. Kind of echo what people have said. I've been very pleased to work hand-in-hand with Greg and, you know, watching him grow in the job. And, you know, we were talking today. And when he started, he had never been a code officer. He had never worked codes. He knew some building things from prior jobs and that kind of stuff, but never had been involved with codes. And worked hard and picked it up. And I got to thank that we could say that we were, we had as good a code officer as anybody in the county, probably. And we're going to miss him. But he's been very helpful in suggestions. And I just want to wish him well. And we're fortunate that he has a reason to come back to our area once in a while and see us. And good luck, Greg.
Thank you.
Jody's going to be the only one that's going to be making your call?
She's going to drive herself.
She's the only one happy.
Any other comments? Should we move on to this tonight or wait? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? You're free to go in a little while.
You still got a little one more.
Yeah, he's got his back.
He didn't have his truck, love him, have his truck.
This is going away, right?
You have to play around, sir, plus a quarter.
Item D, motion accepting the retirement with regrets of planning board member Mike Mazeway, effective Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. I'll make the motion. I'll second. Any discussion on this one?
I worked with Mike for five or six years on the planning board. He is just about the most knowledgeable person. And he was definitely not afraid to express his opinions and thoughts on any matters. And but I, when I was the chairman, I leaned on him for information and learned a lot from him specifically. And so, I, he deserves it. So, congrats, Mike, and we're going to miss you.
He had a big presence on social media, and he was very eloquent in explaining some of the stuff that people would start to, you know, pick her up out. And, you know, once he explained it and the logic behind it, it usually went away. That's the part that I think we're going to miss, too.
Right.
Mike was a great asset. He's a longtime, you know, lifetime resident of Baldensoo. His family ran the corner pharmacy for years. And, you know, he had a real love for the village, and it showed up. And as Shep said, he stifled a lot of ridiculous controversies on Facebook by speaking the truth. And people just said, "No comeback." And it just shut it up.
You did that during the meetings, too, Doug.
Well, I hope he keeps doing that. And I'm going to miss him. So, good luck, Mike.
Mayor, are we still looking for candidates to replace him?
Yeah. Yeah, we can contact the code office for the next couple of weeks. And, you know, hopefully, we'll see two or three people interested, and we can have both of them hear us as candidates.
Right now, the planning board would be looking for an alternate member. The alternate would be moving into, the current alternate would be moving into Mike's position. So, we'd be looking for an alternate to fill that.
That's another great thing that Greg helped add to the program, the alternate members of the two boards. So that when we have somebody leave like this, we don't have a hole. We have the alternate step in, and we can plug that alternate hole. And so, please contact the code office. Contact me if you want, if you're interested. It's a very, very interesting board to be on. You get to see all the projects, individual home ideas, people working on stuff. Really get a broad cross-section of what's going on in the village. So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Next item is item F, moving in, a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make the motion, Mr.?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, who all do you want in attendance?
I think all aboard, and probably Chuck.
Do you want Joe, our attorney, to serve?
If you want to sit, I don't think there's too many legal questions involved, but that reverse, I don't think it takes too long.
Okay, all in favor?
Bruce, can we have Mike come to the meeting, too? He's got some information on the list. Can we have Chief Lefachak come to the executive meeting?
Mayor, Chuck's wondering, and this is Mike Lefachak. If I can sit in, I've got some information regarding the list on that.
Okay.
Very well. Anybody opposed?
He's got a gun, so no.
No, I mean, to the...